I'd like to call this meeting to order. If you can all stand and join me in the flesh.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and just as for all.
And a moment of silence, please. Thank you. All in a clean emotion for the accrual of the June 3rd, 2013 school board meeting minutes, please. Hi, Suzanne, do I have a second?
I can second that.
I can. Do we have any discussion, any changes? We're good, all in favor?
Aye.
We're unanimous, thank you.
One abstention.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I thought I saw your hand up.
No.
All right. We all set with that tonight?
Right.
All right. Correspondence folder, I will send the correspondence folder around. We have some weekly substitute reports here. But we also have, this is a letter from Abel Lynn Lane, thanking us for our support of their trip to New York City for the Art Award. We have that in there. We also have an article from the Harvard Business School Alumni Bulletin. We do have the staff member, Reed Pryor, who was written about in this article, so we want to share the article. I also have a thank you card from Mrs. Preby that I wanted to share with you. So we'll pass that around.
Commendations and good news. I'll start.
All right.
Good news from the elementary schools. From Maple, the 4th graders are going to be visiting MBMS tomorrow on the 18th as part of their transition to the 5th grade at the middle school. And our 4th graders also have a field trip to Strawberry Bank at the end of this week. And a special breakfast sponsored by our PFT, our parent group, on the last day of school. And on the 27th, two lucky students will be riding to school in style, one in a fire truck and one in a police cruiser. Thank you to the Goffstown Fire Department and the Goffstown Police Department for donating their time and energy for this annual event. And a special thank you to our parent group, the PFT, for sharing their time and talents with the Maple Avenue community. Many events and special treats wouldn't happen without our volunteers. And from Glen Lake, the GHS seniors came to Glen Lake today to visit with the kindergarteners that they rented up and delivered a T-shirt to each child that says, "Future GHS Grizzly, Class of 2025." And it was a wonderful experience for everyone involved. And from Bartlett, on June 6th, they had their information night for incoming first graders and their parents. Different centers were set up so groups could learn about the school and their reading and math programs. Students also were shown how the lunchroom works and were able to board up one of the big school buses. Kate McGrath and Kathy Riley were on hand to fingerprint new parents so they could volunteer. And last Thursday, Bartlett held its annual field day at Surratt Fields, and the students were grouped into teams to play numerous relay-type games. The students could also have their face painted, and a pizza lunch from the pizza market was provided. And the Goffstown Fire Department gave away a bike and a ride to school in a fire truck and all the activities. Snacks and pizzas were donated by the Bartlett PTA and were organized by Jen Sallyards. Lots of news.
Thank you. So we have a bunch of sort of quick updates from MBMS. First one is that the PBIS leadership team met on June 7th at Surratt, and we saw Mrs. McCarthy there. She's next door, doing some training. So we sort of met for the whole day and talked about how the culture and climate at Mountain View has changed for the better this year and what we can do next year to continue on that track. And talked about our rollouts and sort of roadmapping what next year is going to look like as far as reinforcements and fun, special activities for the kids. So the leadership team will be meeting three days this summer for a whole day sort of workshops to sort of plan that out and get it ready for September to introduce it to the staff. So we're excited about that. We're going to have Field Day next Monday, so every grade level will be competing in a tournament against each other, and they're going to be having their lunch outdoors in the picnic areas. Step Up Day is tomorrow, so we're excited to see all the new kids. That will be fun. Our final School Pride Day is this Friday, and the theme is Hawaiian Day. So if you may be asked to help with some costumes, send them to you. 8th grade dance is this Friday. Student Government is sponsoring it. We have some surprises planned for the students, so we're excited to see how they like it. I think they're really going to enjoy some of them, even though they've been really trying to get it out of us, but we have not told them, we have not cracked. And the 8th grade promotion ceremony will be June 27th at 5:30. I just wanted to take a minute to introduce Jenna Burns. She is on the PBIS leadership team. She's a student government advisor with me, and she's an 8th grade teacher over at MBMS, and she'll be the teacher rep for MBMS next year, so.
I guess I should introduce Lisa Johnson, who will be the elementary school representative next year as well. She's here to see how things work.
Welcome to both of you.
And I might as well introduce Sam Dever. She's the new student rep. Unfortunately, she's abandoned by Megan. She's here to appear. From the high school, we have, there's a new club called Agents of Change, and they organized a great fundraiser this past Friday called Madagascar Madness. And it was to raise money for, to benefit leadership schools in impoverished countries. It was out in the softball field, and they had food, music, raffles, games, dunk tanks. Unfortunately, it rained, so it was too great of a turnout. They have lots of exciting ideas. This week, FBLA is doing an exciting fundraiser, too. They're having members, students are being hired by staff to do jobs, clean, organize and stuff during their free periods. That's interesting. The leadership class, Environmental Club, are almost done with the campus gardens, so we're finishing those up this week. So you're welcome to check them out in either any of the courtyards and out front between the entrances, the calf and gym entrances, and then out back behind the softball field. So they're looking pretty good. Summer reading is being organized by the English Department and the Info Center staff, and they're doing a great job there. There are lots of titles, staff picked and incoming seniors, a few of them are able to pick some titles. And lots of students are signing up, and then we'll have these great book discussions in the fall. It was our last, first time doing it this year, and it went over really well, so it's a great program. And that's it.
I have here certificates for Lisa Nicholson as well as for Jessica Lyran and Megan, but Megan's not here to have hers. But we do want to formally recognize her time and thank you for your service and for sitting with us on the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If we could retire, we'll get on the left.
Officially, I did want to add that Mountain View Middle School, they had their 5th grade information night and their 7th grade information night last week. I didn't go to the 7th grade one, but I was at the 5th grade one, and it seemed to me to be very successful. I think they all did a great job. The children, you actually, you brought your children this year, and they met at the gym with some student council members. They had their own tour. Parents were up in the calf, and they had, you know, question and answer period in their own tour. And then we all enjoyed like a hot dog cookout, and I thought it was a great way to bring the families in. It was, they had a great turnout, I think they did a great job. Do we have any other commendations or good news? Ms. Jenny?
I was just thinking on my way in tonight, I was really excited to see Goffstown High School sign out front being recognized as one of the best high schools in New Hampshire. I thought that was awesome to see out in entryway.
Good stuff, good addition to the front.
Absolutely.
I don't know if you guys talked about this last meeting, but one of the clubs at our school hosted a club fair at Mountain View, and I just heard that it went over really well. And the 8th graders were able to sign up for clubs. They'd be interested in coming into high school, so it just gave them like a head start, and they'll be emailed over the summer for meetings during the first week of school next year.
Okay, very good. Any other commendations, good news? All right, public comments. Do we have public comments this evening?
My name is Cindy Crompton. I live at 41 Twist Hill Road in Dunbarton. I don't really have a prepared statement, but I wanted to kind of touch base with the Goffstown School Board on the area agreement that's about to expire with Dunbarton. My daughter is in 7th grade right now, and she's in the class of 2018. At the school district meeting, I voted for Goffstown. I wanted to stay here. My daughter likes it. She's on sports teams here. She enjoys her friends and that academic area that she's in and the sports teams that she's become part of. I'd like to see her continue here. I'm trying to do whatever I can to make sure she's able to stay here. I went to the Dunbarton School Board meeting this past month, and they suggested that any parent could attend the Goffstown School Board meeting. And I'm like, well, okay, I'll try that route. So here I am. Some of the questions that they raised were a tuition rate, that they had said that they had not gotten a tuition rate to base any figures on. I'm not quite sure how that fits into if the tuition rate is set for the next year or if this is a tuition rate for when Dunbarton moves to Boe. Without those figures, it's kind of hard for them to decide or people to decide where their kids are going to go. It means my daughter, like, she's resigned herself. She's going to Boe, and it just kills her, kills me to see her struggle with that. So what was the tuition rate? I know that it was proposed that some students wanted to go to Boe next year, and I'm not quite sure where that was. I wrote to the Goffstown School Board to say, "To me, it seems like it would be one thing to release students to go to Boe next year, one year, when you can have my daughter for four years." So to me, in my mind, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense. You lose one year, but you gain four. And I know there's a lot of students and parents that want their kids to continue in Goffstown. They mentioned about hardship cases, and they really couldn't decide on what number to use. I don't know if you can give that now or if that's part of the discussion in this transition phase, but it went from three kids to 10 kids, depending on what number you used. And I don't know what number that is. And then, you know, you have to say with the hardship, and the hardship's not spelled out. So I mean, you could say, well, my hardship is, my kid has a sibling that's going to Goffstown, and I don't want them to be split up. So without some direction, I don't know where that hardship case would be as far as my daughter's concerned. I don't do it for next year, I would have to do it for the following year if it came down to a hardship case. And I guess lastly, pardon my comment, it just seems like it's about, it's about the money more than the kids. That's how I sometimes hear, I have a hard time advocating for Goffstown, and I really want so badly, but I have a hard time with it.
Did you have public comments as well?
I did, and mine is not as well.
I need you to share your name and your address, and then, thank you.
Sure. My name's Maria Nordine, and I'm Grapevine Road in Dunbarton. And both my children attend, well, I have one in Mountain View and one in Goffstown. I also voted to have my kids continue to go to Goffstown. And my, both my kids play sports and have loved and have thrived in both schools. And I've really noticed the difference in Mountain View. And to see Goffstown High School get the fourth best in the state, it just made me feel so good. I'm getting kind of tired of having Boe kind of ran down my throat because I've never had a problem with Goffstown School District. But I do have a question, kind of like Cindy, where exactly how is it going to be? I think my son, this is 2016, he will be allowed to finish in Goffstown, but my daughter would be the first class, like her daughter, going into Boe. And we're actually considering moving to just stay in the Goffstown School District. And it's sad to get to come to such drastic measures to keep your kid in a school district that they love and their friends are all there. But again, I'm not sure how much it would cost to keep my kid going to Goffstown schools and pass the 2014 cutoff date. So I guess that's one of the questions. And yeah, my, my kids would be so sad to go to Boe. They just don't want to go. And we're one of the few, I realize we're a minority, but we still feel strongly about it. I want you to know that there's still Dunbarton parents that really want their kids to go to Goffstown schools, even though the majority voted for Boe. I don't feel that that way at all.
Actually, I'm trying, I just want to hear them out because we're not going to get into a debate. Did you, I just want to allow her a comment, then I was going to just respond.
Yes, I would like to comment.
Yes.
I'm a little bit of a different circumstance.
Your address for your record. Thank you.
I live at 22 Fraser Drive in New Boston. So my child is not directly impacted by this change. But my daughter goes to school and has many, many friends that are Dunbarton residents. And there is a lot of anxiety right now at that level with both parents and children, primarily because there were a lot of insinuations in the press and the media leading up to this vote that kids would be grandfathered, kids would be grandfathered. And then all of a sudden, after the vote, there's a lot of what appears to be as a family looking in or as a parent looking in, there appears to be a lot of finger pointing with Dunbarton pointing to Goffstown, Goffstown pointing to Boe, both pointing back to Goffstown. And you know something? We're asking for your leadership. More than anything else right now, we need to give peace of mind to the children so this doesn't become a distraction from their education, a distraction from their interpersonal relationships with their friends and their peers. We need to bring definition to what this means. And I'm asking for your leadership above anything else, regardless of whose ball it really lies in, which court. It doesn't matter right now because kids and families are being impacted by the anxiety caused from this change. It's like parents being, moving to a different township without making the decision to move to a different township. They're being told they have to go somewhere else to school, and it simply isn't fair. And if you had children in the middle school with friends across community, you would feel this anxiety in your home as well. So I'm imploring you, I'm asking you, as a leadership team for our Goffstown School District, please do something about this. Please bring definition, please collaborate, please extend the olive branch, and find a way to put this issue to rest so that we can all move on and continue to win our basketball games and continue to play our soccer games and continue to go to birthday parties and enjoy it. And know that these kids can stay together if that's what their families choose to do. Please be leaders on our behalf, bring definition. Thank you.
I want to thank you three for coming, and I want to thank you for your thoughts. Like I said before the meeting, this isn't a time that we can get into a debate. But what I do want you to know is that we are working on it. The current area agreement, as it is for withdrawal, states very clearly, in the event of a withdrawal or other termination of this agreement for any reason, existing New Boston or Dunbarton high school students shall, at New Boston or Dunbarton's request, so that would be your boards, be permitted to graduate from Goffstown Area High School. Our board, when we met, we've talked about this a lot. A few months ago, we went so far as to say that we would be willing to take any of the students, the middle school students as well. We are sitting down at the table with the Dunbarton board. We are, we welcome your students, and we are actively working for a resolution. As I said, you were asking about the meetings. Keep an eye on our websites for when the meetings are posted. They are public meetings, unless you wanted to, not public, but generally speaking, they're, they're public.
What are they called?
Goffstown-Dunbarton Tuition Agreement Committee. Thank you. Any other public comments this evening? Seeing none, I'll go to standing committee reports. We have Policy Review Committee. We have some first reads, it looks like.
Yeah, we have two first reads. I know one who's JFAA and JFAA, JLCC, IGE, IGE, the regulations associated with it. We'll read them all for the first read. We reviewed them last Monday. So you should all have a copy. And obviously, we have to skip a meeting, and then the second read will be, most likely, if we have a meeting in July, we can do it then.
That is not going to be a long business meeting because most of it will be a non-meeting. So honestly, it's not likely that this will come forward to us until an August meeting. Okay, yeah, I was going to say, unless there's something urgent.
I will say, though, what we've discovered, we did need to make one correction on JFAA. When it comes back for a second read, we're going to make a slight change. It says, show proof of residency for 1st grade. We really need to change that to say, no, pre-K. And pre-K kindergarten, 1st grade. So we will make one correction when it comes back up for a second read.
On number, that's the addition of number three.
JFAA, when it comes on admission of resident students. In a sense, 1st graders must provide proof of residency. It should be about a fourth of the way down the page.
It says for the following groups, for all 1st grade children.
Yes, that's the one we're going to be changing.
So you want all 1st grade and pre-K?
It will say pre-K, kindergarten, and 1st grade. Thank you all for coming.
The addition of number one.
But that's not, we have to wait till the second read.
Right, but in order, in order for me to understand, number three was an addition. It wasn't a before. Because I don't have a comparison.
That's correct.
On communicable disease, that's an easy one because we got the old version and the new version, and it's quite different. IGE is brand new?
Yes, we do not have that policy.
What caused us to draft that policy, IGE? The parental objection to specific course material?
I'm not sure what it's first priority or fourth, but most districts have to have that.
Is that what is required by law? Okay, that makes sense then? You would not want to be otherwise? All right, so like I said, we're, our July 15th meeting is quite full already. We won't be seeing this again until August.
Is it still 6 o'clock?
6:30. Which was its original, I thought? I don't think it's changed. It should be 6:30.
July 15th to 6:30.
Yes.
That's here?
You know, honestly, I don't know if we can reserve this or if we'll be at the SAU.
Be advised.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm actually about the summer news. We have not met here in the summer. All right, is that it for Policy Review?
It is, thank you.
Thank you. Planning and Communications, Retta will not be able to join us for another 15 minutes, but I can at least share that PNC, this is an off week for PNC, so we have not met. It looks like she's calling for a meeting for us before our July 15th meeting, so that will be the next meeting there. CNE?
CNE met last week, and we went over basically our work plan for next year. One thing that we're going to maybe work with PNC a little is making sure that all of the amazing stuff that we learn about in CNE from our administrators, everybody else knows. So we're looking into doing some PR stuff, maybe having that meeting televised or whatever, just so that some of that really good information that we hear is available to lots of other people to see what's going on and the great things that are happening on every single level of our school.
I know, it sounds terrific. That's a good idea to do that.
And our next meeting is September 16th.
Thank you. Budget Committee. Budget Committee was, they canceled their meeting for this Sunday, Thursday. So unless I'm mistaken, I think we won't be meeting again till September. So it'd be the 3rd Thursday in September. And I therefore have nothing to report. ANA?
We met this evening at 5:45. We had a number of topics to discuss, of which each of them.
6:45.
Six, what did I say, 5:45? Central or eastern or Atlantic time? At 6:45, quarter to 7:00. And every topic we discussed is later on in the agenda. So I will defer to then.
All right, Dan, thank you for that. Elementary Facilities. Do we have any records?
There has not been a meeting scheduled.
Okay.
As reported at our last, or our June 3rd meeting, administration will be getting together to basically come up with an archive of all of the materials that were discussed, lessons learned during our attempt this past winter in support of the bond. It's been difficult to pull the group together on a specific night. That's why it's defaulted to administration.
Did they ever get the voter list?
They did.
They did, very good.
All right, thanks, Red. Goffstown-New Boston Area Committee Report?
We met last week Tuesday. Ginny, Philip, and I for Goffstown, and Wendy and Keith were there for New Boston. In framework, I'd say Ginny, we've got it pretty well done, and Philip has two items that I will wait for him to kind of ask you guys your opinion on. Because I, this was new on the agenda. I didn't bring it with me. And I'm not sure, it had two pieces to the closing and withdrawal and comments he wants, and I think he can frame it better than I can. But it's pretty much the same agreement we agreed to with the rebounds. With little change.
Very little change, wording change.
Wording changes to just commas, spaces, take out the word department, those kind of things.
Okay.
Except for Philip's two items. We will meet again. Ginny, it's June, is it the last Tuesday in June?
I'm showing July here.
Okay, it's on the second Tuesday of July, July 9th.
Okay.
No, I'm wrong. It's Monday.
That's Monday.
It's Monday, July 8th.
It's posted here as July.
At 6:00, at 6:00 PM.
I did turn the phone, I found it, thank you.
All right.
We'll meet again on July 8th.
And it's going very well. Just quickly going through discussing stuff and moving right along, so.
And just for a note, since it is on the agenda and I didn't read it, it's at 6:00 PM. We're going to meet earlier.
Okay. Thanks, Dan. All right, SAU Executive Officers Interim Superintendent Search Committee Report. We met last week, and during the course of that meeting, we did get, it was a four-page document. Did you want to speak to it, MC? Would you like to speak to the document?
Well, at the recommendation of the Executive Committee, we took the activities, assignments, tasks the superintendent would normally attend to over the course of the summer. And we divided them up between, this was a group of Denise Moore, Ray LaBeur, Kate McGrath, Brian Volkey, and myself. And we separated the tasks to those that we felt best aligned with what we do. And put together a document that would inform the boards as well as administration to let people know who you're going to call, what if you haven't been, where do you go? And a proposal, I guess, Ray, you do say fair enough to say that it was a proposal that we brought forward to the committee? And if you want to take it from here?
Yes, it was accepted by the committee. We reviewed it, we spent quite a bit of time reviewing. I'd say that the committee accepted that as what would be a working document. I think we recognize that as time passes, perhaps it might need to change a bit as balances shift. shift. M.C. will be working with the Goffstown board, whereas Brian will be working with the New Boston and Dunbarton boards. Brian was named the acting superintendent, because we need to name one. So Brian, Brian and M.C., again, I don't want to speak for you, but it was very clear that they had talked it all out, worked it all out, decided, you know, Brian would be the acting superintendent and that was agreeable to the committee. We plan to meet throughout the summer. Interestingly enough, I see here that the next date is July eighth, but I thought we had a meeting this Thursday.
We do have one this Thursday. It's posted, I had it posted.
We do have a meeting this Thursday. So that is the plan, is we'll be meeting this Thursday and then again on July eighth. We have several dates selected already through July.
That's the executive committee, not the entire of the executive.
No. Just the officers of the executive committee.
Just the core, the core group there.
Are you really meeting at eight AM?
We are, actually.
Yes.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's how it works sometimes. It's how you gotta make it work, is you couldn't find nights that were open, but it turned out that we could find some mornings that that would work. So it seemed to work out all right for us to do that. Hank thought he caught a typo. All right. Yeah.
Thursday, eight, eight, eight AM.
Not, it's not at eight AM this Thursday. He told me to keep.
Oh.
My understanding was the meeting on the twenty. Ray, are you under the same understanding?
And then Monday, the twenty-fourth is when it's gonna be. Okay. That was not my recollection, but that doesn't mean that it didn't happen.
Yeah, there was two people who couldn't make that date, that's why we did it.
Okay.
I just remembered.
Cause I just posted it today, the twenty.
No worries.
Thank you. You guys drive my memory, so thanks.
I know, I, you know, you've got too many meetings going on.
Six thirty, six thirty. Monday, you have. Keep them straight. Eight AM is July eighth.
Monday, the twenty-fourth, then six thirty. All right, superintendent report.
Superintendent asked me to remind you all about the barbecue coming up on Wednesday, seeing barbecue. It's a lot of fun, it really is. Come in, use your barbecue skills, whip a couple burgers and hot dogs and the kids really appreciate it. It's wonderful to be able to mix with the students and with the faculty. So if you're available, ten o'clock, same age. And I was also asked to remind you about graduation.
What time is graduation? This evening, seven o'clock?
You can be in July for Park Nation.
I know. I just wanted to be reminded, so graduation's at seven o'clock on Wednesday.
And I understand that there's another, I believe there's another event going on at the Davis Center that same evening. So people just might, it's a rehearsal of some kind. They don't anticipate that it's gonna impact Park Nation too much, but you might want to think about arriving.
Extra early.
A little early, okay. All right. Is there anything else?
Nope, that was it.
All right.
Light night.
Definitely. All right, so moving forward, old business, unencumbered funds, the Mountain View Middle School roof.
Okay, at our last meeting, the board had asked administration to go back out and re-validate quotations that had been received for the Mountain View roof. We did do that and we did get two, two updates, one being from North Point Roofing. That number was about two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. The second update was from Century Roofing, from Dunbarton. That number was a hundred ninety-three thousand, five hundred dollars for the Mountain View That being said, we now need to be making a decision on whether to proceed with the roof, how we're going to be financing it, whether it'll be coming from unassigned funding from this year. Our latest look at the unreserved or unassigned funds balance for this school year is that there's about two hundred nineteen thousand dollars left in the bill.
Sorry, how much?
Two nineteen. So the board was considering at one time as to whether or not to include the roofing job in the financing package that we were looking at for the Honeywell Phase Two program. And I believe the decision, decision was made to, to remove the roofing project from that particular financing package. We have a couple of alternatives to look at. We've been talking about the LGC rate refund or rate premium refunds resulting from overpayments back in the two thousand ten, eleven school year. That will probably net the school district close to a hundred sixty-five thousand dollars in the way of a premium return. That premium return, we've already elected, administration has elected to leave it with the local government center and what it will serve as is a credit for the district's premiums for the upcoming school year. So as we begin our July and August activity, the first hundred sixty-five thousand dollars will be deducted from that, from that credit balance. The good news there is that frees up monies that have already been budgeted for health insurance to the tune of a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. That money can be repurposed for another project. And low and behold, we do have a roofing project that will consume all of that, should the board decide to go that way. To come up with the balance, approximately forty thousand dollars to add to the hundred and sixty-five, to cover the total cost of the roofing project. We again, at our last meeting, took a look at the savings that will be realized, that the district will realize when they do change energy or electric energy suppliers from public service to Integris Energy. We have projected that about forty-five thousand dollars would become available in the way of savings over the course of the next year. That money too can be repurposed, it's already in the budget. That's one alternative that could be used to come up with the balance to finance the new roof. A second alternative available to the district would be, again, to use the fund balance or, excuse me, the credit memo, the hundred sixty-five thousand dollars resulting from the local government center refund. And taking a portion of this year's unassigned fund balance, say, let's say forty thousand dollars of the two hundred nineteen thousand that we're projecting, we could, we could commit that immediately this year in the way of a purchase order with one of these roofing companies. Go out and actually begin procurement of roofing materials and tools, whatever would be required to start a roofing project on July first over at Mountain View Middle School. That would leave about a hundred eighty thousand dollars in the unreserved fund balance or unassigned fund balance for use in other, for other purposes. The board was concerned about trying to address as many of the security update projects as it could during our last meeting. There would be some money left to address those items. The board also will be looking later on this evening at whether or not to populate the capital reserve account resulting from the favorable vote on Article Four back in the March election where the school district can indeed, you know, deposit up to two and a half percent of its net assessment for the monies it receives from the town in the way of tax payments from year to year to create an emergency reserve to address things like the Mountain View roof or to be used as tax relief, much like what we do now. So there are a couple of alternatives on the table, open to questions here.
I have a question. When you said nets one sixty-five, what do you mean by net one sixty-five?
Next, next.
No, one sixty-five, you said a net of one sixty-five back.
Because there's, there's a total of two hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty-six cents due back.
And that's the net is just the amount that-
Right, forty-two, no, forty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-five is the amount that goes back to the employee.
Okay, so that's what I want to make sure of.
One sixty-five, forty-two, yes, okay.
That was my question as well, if that included the employees or if it was just our-
Yeah, the, the board need direct us to, to proceed with the refund to employees. We will be taking that money back from local government center in the form of a check and we will be issuing individual checks back to the employees using that balance, forty-two thousand dollars.
And alternatively, we chatted about this at A and F, this is one of the things we chatted about. And if we look at and we pool two things at once, the roof, the security devices, and think about those as two big projects that we, we need to do, and then we can say we have three places to fund that. We have funding of the unencumbered funds, we have funding from a hundred and sixty-five credit that's sitting next year, and we have about a forty to forty-five thousand expected reduction of energy costs. So the only thing we really have to look at is the timeline, the difference between June thirtieth and July first. That's really the difference in the timeline. The third piece of it is that how much of the two and a half percent of unreserved fund balance, if any, can we set aside? The two and a half percent is we can set up to approximately two hundred nineteen thousand aside. We vote, we don't, no, that's not two hundred and four. Four thousand aside, okay? So right now, we have about two hundred nineteen. If you wanted to, you could, we could vote to take the whole two nineteen and set it aside in this fund, do the roof from next year's credit, but do no security. See where the play comes? So I think almost the first thing to think about is how much, if any, would we like to kind of set aside into this unreserved fund balance? Cause we really haven't talked about that as a group at all.
I guess my question is, is this a little bit semantics in that we can use the unreserved fund balance to do the roof, but then realize some, you know, budget savings, so to speak. We've got, you know, this money in the next fiscal year that could just as easily be allocated to updating security issues. You know, they could be used to do that. I'm-
That's correct.
It's-
The only reason I bring up the unreserved fund balance is of the monies that's in this year up to June thirtieth versus next year, you can only use the two, up to two hundred nineteen thousand to put in that unreserved fund balance. The rest for me is somewhat moot because whether we do the roof out of this year's funds or next year's funds, I'm gonna vote for the roof. Then there's gonna be security enhancements that we have to look at, whether it comes out of this year's fund or next year's fund, to me, it's kind of moot because it's, we're gonna do something. The important part that we have to make a decision is, of course, the two and a half percent that can only come out of the unreserved or the unsecured fund at the moment.
Do I see a hand? I do see hands. Hank and then Jenny?
In a way, I agree with you, Dan, but in a way, I also disagree with you. The important part to me right now is which path gets the roof done this summer? That's the main argument.
According to jury, either path because some of the money has to come from this year. So we would have to actually set the order in place. We could encumber some fines right away and pay it out of both years. Either way, we make a decision.
In my mind, the priority is that roof first.
Agreed.
And then you can put the money in a reserve fund.
Agreed.
Go ahead, Jenny. As far as the unreserved fund, what are the restrictions on that? Can we do our safety things out of that money or is that restricted money as far as what we can spend it on and is the safety issue able to come out of that?
Ginny, you're asking about the two and a half percent deposit?
I'm, well, yeah, I guess both.
Okay, that Article Four.
Yeah.
That fund is created and in order for the school district to use it, it needs to be used for an emergency repair or an emergency item. What the district would have to do is to present its intended use to the Department of Education and secure their approval in order for us to make a withdrawal from that account to, to do the security items. I think what Dan was suggesting was that if we were to do some measure of the security updates now, it's the board's decision on how much of the current two nineteen number to use to finance that. And you don't have to seek approval of a third party.
Cause that's what we need to do, we need to get that done. Then after we do the roof and decide what we're gonna do as far as the safety things go, then we know what money will go into that fund, yeah.
But we have to decide before June thirtieth, how much we're gonna put in the fund?
Correct.
Okay, so we don't have a lot of time.
So that would be tonight.
Yeah.
Cause that's our meeting, so.
We, between the two years, we have about four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that's sitting on the table.
We have to do it tonight and Ray has presented us with so many different ways to do it. Frankly, I'm confused on which is which, but we have to do it tonight.
What would your recommendations be, Ray, as far as the best ways to use the money to get done, what we need to get done in all areas?
One of the roads I'm partial to is to look to the hundred and sixty-five thousand that we'll see in the way of rate refund next year in August to cover the lion's share of the roofing job. I would dedicate all of that money to it. I would probably look at the two hundred and nineteen thousand and, again, this is probably your A and F committee's recommendation, but I think what they were, one of the roads that they were considering is to take the balance, which would be about forty thousand dollars, I'm rounding, to two hundred thousand now. To take about forty thousand of the two nineteen and to commit that this week to starting the roofing project. And the roof is taken care of. There'd be about a hundred eighty thousand left after that particular transfer for the board to evaluate the security updates as well as a deposit, if any, into this two and a half percent fund. That would be the pot of money you could work with.
And pretend that we don't deal with the energy savings that we may get next year and just have that as a, kind of like a little buffer in our budget for anything that might come up?
Any savings you realize there becomes money for the board to-
Line item.
You are operating with a default budget next year, so it doesn't hurt to.
Sounds good to me.
I guess my concern is I'm not sure if we're equipped to make a decision on the security enhancements, the safety do. I know, I don't have my, my wish list, I don't have my spreadsheets. Do you, I mean Suzanne?
I've got my list, but I have to tell you, I went through it and, and I did kind of check off the safety and security things, but do I know what they are? No, I don't, a lot of them. So I would say to give the administrators latitude in choosing the most severe need out of these lists and to go forward with fixing those up to the dollar amount we prescribed.
So is that a motion?
No, I can make it work.
But I'm just, I'm trying to make sure that, that we're talking to someone. So that's my big concern, is we have an extensive list of things that need to be done. And I would hate to not do them because we are now changing paths a little bit based on our last discussions. Our last discussions were, okay, let's get these quotes ready to do the roof. We're taking a little bit of a different tack here and I want to make sure that the decision we do make tonight is one we're prepared to do. And definitely make sure that it does what we need to do. There's a lot on that list that needs to be done. I want to make sure that we're able to get that done if we choose this tack. Does that make any sense? Sue's looking at me.
I'm just saying, I'm not equipped to make the decision as to what needs to get done.
You're suggesting, Sue, putting a ceiling-
An NTE figure.
For expenditures on-
You know, what I'm suggesting is let the people who know what they're talking about decide which things need to be addressed in what order.
Some things I'm looking at that I think are real important are the classroom door lock conversions. I think the outside doors that are listed here are, are huge things that need to be done. I'm thinking of any of our classrooms that don't have shades, especially on our patios, need to have shades in their classroom that they can fold because they, you know, they can be seen from the patio if anybody were in there. So those are some of the things that I am really thinking of. Shades for classroom doors so that people don't have- Shades for classroom doors so that people don't have to put paper up on their doors during a lockdown. You know, I think some of those things are important to have in place so that they're taken care of. You know, a teacher has enough to do when everyone's in a tizzy and there's something dangerous going on and they have to be taping up paper over doors, you know? So I think some of those things are the things that I really think are important to.
Do you have a rough number as to how much those add up to be?
No, because they're all over the place.
There's about $60,000 in here for safety, not including the realignment of the back road, which is 65 all by itself. That's a rough number.
Dan?
Just tying on with what Sue was saying, you could, the board could decide to determine or designate a not-to-exceed amount for those upgrades, safety upgrades. Ray, if I understand what you were saying earlier, it's $219,000 less $40 for the deposit leaves roughly $180,000. So that's what, that's the amount of money that the school department has to play with at this point in time. The rest of the roof is coming out of the LGE money, okay? So that's the amount of money that the board has to make a decision on of, for the safety upgrades. How much of that amount of money does the board wish to designate as a not-to-exceed amount for the security upgrade, allowing the administration to determine which items are of the highest importance? Ray, is that a fair summary? Thank you.
I would say that the superintendent had said that if you got to this point, that perhaps it might make sense to prescribe a set amount, and then she would meet with Jerry and the principals and determine, because Jenny, as you suggested, you talked about shades, you talked about doors, there may be a priority at the high school that's not the same at Maple Avenue, that's not the same at Bartlett.
I guess my only other question is the difference in the prices from the two contractors. 10% is a lot. And you wanted 2%, you expect 10% is a lot. So are we real confident, Jerry, that we're going to get a good roof?
Yep.
Okay. I'm easy to please.
Yes, I'm looking at the sheet. The sheet has just shy $950,000.
Yeah.
Suggestions?
200 for the roof.
Yeah.
All right, so $750,000.
It's $127,000. Those are the big ones for the smart boards and 65 for realignment of the back roads.
No smart boards this year? Okay, so what is, do I have a motion?
I would have a motion, but it kind of goes backwards.
Oh, dear.
Rather, no, it's doing the same thing, but taking the majority of the money for the roof out of this year's funds and using the other money, because we could still give some money and say, up to this, we're going to meet on July 15th. I know we're not going to do a whole lot of administrative stuff, but it's possible, if it be by the committee, on July 15th, we have a chance to look at the list and come with our favorites, or additionally, I mean, between now and July 15th, they're going to say, hey, this is what we took from the money you allotted to us. This is what else we think we can do, and then we still have a small bit of that, the difference between 165 that's left from the rebate to work with. So it's, instead of saying like, here you go, here's 60,000, say, here's 40,000 for, because I'm still looking at that 2.5% perhaps, 40,000 for 2.5%, 40,000 for security updates, whatever's left put towards the roof, the balance comes out of next year. How much is left? $120,000 out of the money from the LGC that we don't have to pay. And then on July 15th, we can get back from the administration saying, okay, this is what we planned to do with the 40, we got it started right away. So that's the money we got encumbered. And now this is what we can do for the rest of the summer. That was my thought process. Either way we go, it's, kind of comes out of the same pool. It's just that I would like to get a second bite at the apple on July 15th. That's also what I'm hearing from a couple others.
I'm going to be straightforward with you about the July 15th meeting. It is already two hours long with one agenda item. I'm not going to put a lot of other business, because that's a minimum.
We were going to start at 6:00, Ray.
6:30.
6:30 now.
6:30. But I'm just very cognizant of the fact that we have one piece of business that I've been told to expect a minimum of two hours. So I'm not, I'm not going to be putting a heck of a lot else out there for us.
Well, if we don't get it by July 15th, we can always, if we meet in August, we can do it again in August. I mean, that's why I don't want to commit all of the money from that next year based on, based on the roof, because June 30th is coming. Whatever we don't encumber by June 30th, it's mine. It gets recycled into the system. So if, in my mind, if I can plan the money we have available to plan to June 30th, then I know a number certain of what is expected to happen, and then we still have the capability next year to do some of the updates.
So make a motion.
Do we want to start with the 2.5% first?
It's your story.
Yeah, well, because for me, that takes it off the top. And I haven't heard anybody talk about how much money they want to put in the reserve. I make a motion, we vote to put 40,000 to start the reserve account.
Seconded for discussion.
So we've got a motion by Dan, seconded by Suzanne, to put 40,000 in the reserve account?
I think I need to hear the whole plan though before.
Now, I can say that the whole plan would be take 40,000 of the $219,000, let's round it at 220 just for the heck of it. So 40,000 leaves 180,000. And we take 165,000 towards the roof. That leaves enough wiggle room. That leaves 15 wiggle room between now and the end of the year in case something happens. The balance of the 30,000 for the roof will come out of the 165 for next year, leaving 105,000 total left over to do any kind of security updates. Or that 165, instead of taking that all for the roof this year, we come up to 105,000 and leave 60 for, up to 60,000 for security updates, because that's what it totals here. And then the difference between the 105 and 195 next year, it's, the math all adds up. So that's what I would do, 40 for this, 105 for the roof, and 60 for security.
So we're basically taking 40,000 of our available funds and putting it in a savings account?
Yep.
And not addressing any of these things with that money?
Correct.
Okay.
Not currently.
Not currently, right.
And that's the only piece. So we would have, so if we do the math again, out of the 220, 40, 180 left over, take 105 for the roof, 60 for, or 100 for the roof, 60 for the safety upgrades. That still leaves then, at that point, 19,000 if I was going to do 100. Then out of the 165,000 next year, let's just round it to 95,000 for the rest of the roof, and that leaves you another 70,000 next year.
You're going to fit that all into a motion?
No, I'm going to do it separately. Jenny wanted to see the whole plan, and I can do it all in one motion, but I thought it might be better if we just did it individually.
Ray, do you have any problem with Dan's scenario?
No, no, it makes sense.
And does that cover what we need for security stuff?
60,000.
60,000.
That's what it adds up to?
That's not addressing, though, the reconfiguration of the back parking lot then.
Not yet. That would have to come out of that other 70.
Okay.
Next year.
Maybe.
Okay. Plus, that doesn't include the 40,000 in savings from the lower electricity rates.
Right, so we'd have extra money in the future to potentially do that.
Yes.
We're talking around numbers here. Out of curiosity, is it possible to have whatever is left? Like, you know, we're rounding 40 to the reserve. If we've allocated 105 to the roof, 60 to security, and 40 to the reserve, and we have $1,000 in the account on June 30th, can it be 41 to the reserve?
Yeah, you might want to make your motion to deposit up to.
To be open.
You could, you know, make it 80,000, up to 80,000, and then whatever you do have left on June 30th is what goes into that account.
If that's the will of the board.
So we'll have to what the town does.
Yeah. Because I see a danger in specifying the number. If we actually don't want the number specified, if we do, that's perfect, but just the other scenario is the number may be limiting if we want to.
So you're going to change your motion?
You want to pull it back?
Yes, I'll remove my second.
I'll remove my motion. I like the way you said it, if you want to restate it.
I want to restate, am I restating it on your behalf?
No, on your behalf.
Like, am I making your motion for you, Dan? I was just recommending amending the motion to recognize that we are speaking around numbers right now. So I guess it's the motion is to allocate 105,000 to the roof, 60, oh.
You're going to make a.
By this motion.
All right, you don't want to see, then I can't make a motion.
Well, if everybody's amenable to this, we can make a single motion.
Dan, restate your motion, please.
I want to get an eye contact to see if we want to do it all in one.
I think all in one's going to be too confusing.
End all financing for the roof in one motion, handle all financing for everyone else in one.
Then I make a motion that we set aside for, we encumber $105,000 for the roof out of the unencumbered funds of this year.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
Thank you. So seconded by Suzanne. Hank?
Yeah, but that motion will not cover the roof, that will cover part of it.
Correct.
Why don't you increase the motion, cover the whole thing?
Because we need the money from next year. Okay, I see what you're saying. So.
You're earmarking it for next year.
Let me see if this motion plays it, because it does both. I make a motion, we encumber $193,500 for a roof, of which 105 to be encumbered from available funds in the current year, and the balance in next year. Would that suffice?
Second. So did we get the first? Did you get that motion? Encumbering 193 for the roof, 105 from this year's funds, the balance from next. I have a second from Suzanne. Do I have any further discussion? Hank?
Is that the right figure?
193, 195.
Okay.
193,500 was the quote that you had.
193,500. 193,500.
Yes, please? Okay. So we're all set. Are we clear on our motion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any fir, oh.
And the next year's money is what money specifically? LGC money?
That's what we're thinking about, yeah.
Okay.
Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. Thank you. And if I'm not mistaken, this ends the unencumbered funds discussion? All right.
I don't want to.
Right? All right. So now moving on to new business manifest and vouchers.
I move a manifest of $1,447,452. Second?
So, Dan, seconded by Dan.
We have payroll taxes and benefits of $819,669. We have some fed payments, Lighthouse Schools, $7,000, Merrimack Special Education Collaborative for $7,200, the provider, which is the transportation for April, $33,600. We have a number of other general expenses, PSNH, $12,000 at Gopstown High School, Gopstown Truck Center, there were three payments, athletic transportation for May, $10,500, May vocational transportation, $6,000, by the way, I'm rounding the numbers. The regular education, a monthly is, or monthly payment, $96,600, the SAU payment, $56,000, something called Schoolmark, which is the, oh, yeah, Suzanne, the MVMS graphing calculators. Yes, we bought calculators. $6,038.40.
Thank you.
And WestEd, the final payment, $10,000.
You don't know how much it cost them to say that.
Thank you.
Always P S A.
Any questions for Ray?
Where's the P, is the PSA chart here?
It is not on there. I found it when I went through the details. $11,964.86.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. 2013-14 food service. Have you got some more prices?
Megan Bizarro, our food service director for the Gopstown School District will be joining us to talk about this. Megan, do you want me to go through quickly on the financial overview?
Sure, go right ahead.
Yeah, and then we can talk about other items. If you go into your page three of your handout package, you'll see a sheet that kind of works like this, a couple of blocks on it. Left-hand side being the projected results for the current school year, the 2012-13 school year, started off with a food service fund balance of $168,724. And we are projecting to finish off this year with a fund balance of $191,524.
Okay, a motion to put up to seventy-five thousand dollars in the reserve account by Suzanne, seconded by Jenny. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous, thank you. And if I'm not mistaken, this ends the unencumbered funds discussion? All right. Right? All right. So, now moving on to new business manifest and vouchers.
I move a manifest of one million, four hundred and forty-seven thousand, four hundred fifty-two dollars and nine cents. Second.
So, so Dan, seconded by Dan.
We have payroll taxes and benefits of eight hundred and nineteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars. We have some fed payments, lighthouse schools, seven thousand, Merrimack Special Education Collaborative for seventy-two hundred, the provider, which is the transportation for April, thirty-three thousand, six hundred. We have a number of other general expenses, PSNH, twelve thousand dollars at Gopstown High School, Gopstown Truck Center, there were three payments, athletic transportation for May, ten thousand, five hundred, May vocational transportation, six thousand, by the way, I'm rounding the numbers. The regular education, a monthly is, or monthly payment, ninety-six thousand, six hundred, the SAU payment, fifty-six thousand, something called Schoolmark, which is the, oh yeah, Suzanne, the MVMS graphing calculators. Yes, we bought calculators. Six thousand, thirty-eight dollars and forty cents.
Thank you.
And WestEd, the final payment, twenty thousand dollars.
You don't know how much it costs them to say that.
Thank you.
Any questions for Ray?
Where's the P, is the PSA chime here?
It is not on there, I found it when I went through the details. Eleven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty-six cents.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. Twenty thirteen, fourteen, food service. Have you got some line prices?
Megan Bizarro, our food service director for the Gopstown School District will be joining us to talk about this. Megan, do you want me to go through quickly on the financial overview?
Sure, go right ahead.
Yeah, and then we can talk about other items. Like you go into your page three of your handout package. You see a sheet that kinda looks like this, a couple of blocks on it. Left-hand side being the projected results for the current school year, the two thousand twelve, thirteen school year. Started off with a food service fund balance of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars. And we are projecting to finish off this year with a fund balance of a hundred ninety-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars. That's growing fund balance by twenty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars, and I think we have to really say thanks to Megan for pulling this one off. This year has been a challenging one with respect to sales volume, but some very intelligent buying and cost expenditure savings have resulted in our, our ability to grow, to grow that fund balance. So that's a nice piece of work for this year.
Good job, Megan, thank you.
You're welcome.
The projection for next year is pretty much right off of the operating budget that we proposed back in March. We were looking at sales and reimbursements totaling a million, ninety-seven thousand dollars. Expenses are going to equal the same number, again, remember that food service is an enterprise fund, you can only spend really what you put in in the way of revenue. We're projecting a flat fund balance for next year. This will change as we get to this point in time next June, we'll give you a better feel for that. Important note here, you remember last year, the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act of two thousand ten had a pricing formula in that that tied our average meal selling price to the amount that we're compensated for by the federal government for our free and reduced lunch program. We, the magic number this year is two dollars, fifty-one cents, that's the average reimbursement from the feds. And when, when we look at sales of two twenty-five per meal at the elementary level, two fifty at the middle school level, and two seventy-five at the high school level, we are just exceeding that two dollar, fifty-one cent number. Good news there is we can hold pricing steady as we go into next year, we do not need a price increase, either to cover the federal requirement or to cover shortfalls in the program. So again, thanks Megan for making that happen for us.
Actually, it wasn't just me, I have a staff of about twenty-eight folks who work very hard each and every day, and I'm very grateful that they do, because sometimes I think they really work magic. This year has been, last year when I was here, we were, we had a lot of uncertainty in terms of regulations and what lunch would even look like on the tray. We've been working in quicksand for most of the years because the regulations indeed kept changing in terms of what was required of us, and then one day it was here, one day it changed. The staff have been very good, very patient with me, and because for, for me, as the person in charge, it was very frustrating at times to not have the answer for them, to give them that support, as they were trying to provide service to the students. And, and so, we are really looking forward to next year and having some fun with the students instead of being in the muck and mire of regulations. So we're, we're hopeful for that. So I just wanted to give the team some kudos, because they really have done a wonderful job in a, in a tough year. Some of the things that we have accomplished, I just wanna kind of bring that to your attention. Last year, we also talked about the whole grain products and trying to find a brand-new pasta that actually tastes good. We actually have found one, and we had some really great high school students help us unload about two hundred and twenty-five cases of pasta, because through the work that we do with our purchasing collaborative, which has grown to thirty-six school districts in the state, we were able to purchase with them and have a tractor trailer backup and deliver all of that pasta to us, because if we had not been part of that group, we would not have had access to this product. It is delicious, Mrs. Zola's class at Maple Ave tried it, and they went, wow, this is good. It actually looks like regular pasta, not that dark stuff. It holds up, it's not grainy, it's got a really nice texture, and it comes in different shapes, so we're able to get a fettuccine, a bow tie, some different shapes for the students instead of just the regular ones. So, so that was pretty, pretty exciting on the food service front with that. We've been working really hard, looking at our maximizing our efficiency and our staffing levels. We collaborated with Mountain View and, and the PBIS, and trying to look at the future for how the lunchroom will look, and behaviors that are expected from not only students, but the staff as well, and creating a schedule that would work and meet our budgetary guidelines in terms of labor costs, and trying to get to a better lunch schedule for next year. And we were able to do that by looking at, being more creative in how we're utilizing our labor. So, we're looking at that in, in all buildings. We have done some solicitation of ideas from the high school students, they brought us some great ideas, a lot of which we already had, but some of them were also very good. So, we implemented one of them, there was an Asian Day that we did, and we had one student come in and said it was the best meal he'd had all year, so, in June, we're still trying something new. We also, and this is a thank you to you, the school board and administration for supporting the team, we had a two-day culinary camp for our staff, and we brought in some folks from other districts, and we, they had a great, great time, and in fact, have asked for it again, and so we're gonna do it again in August, we're gonna identify the recipes that we really wanna work on, techniques and those types of things, so, they're really, the team is really responding very, very nicely to some training and wanting to learn more, and wanting to do a better job for the students. Next year, we're looking at a few different things as well, as I alluded to, we are looking to have some fun next year, not just all this regulation, it gets a, it's, it's a little tough, but we, we're putting together promotional calendars for the year, so, you, about each month at each school, you'll see kind of, it might be a lucky sticker day, you'll see sampling, we've kind of mapped it all out, might be National Pancake Day, we're, we're trying to have some fun with the students and staff while still doing it within the regulations and trying to teach them some nutrition education at the same time. We'll still be working with the purchasing collaborative, that's just been such a benefit to us, and hopefully we'll be able to see some more new products with that way. We'll be starting to look a little bit, hopefully, well, now that we have the regulations down, some more farm to school, and seeing what that might look like, we're looking forward to maybe some fruits and vegetables from the high school, and trying to look at that and what that, what that looks like for us. Typically, what happens where it kind of falls apart is transportation from the farm to the school. Farmer doesn't have time, we don't necessarily have the vehicle, so sometimes that can, can be a, a struggle, but we'd like to take a look at that and talk with the state coordinator as well, to see if we could find maybe some models, to see what's, what's happening with that, to see, you know, if we can introduce it even on a very small scale, maybe even just through, Bartlett has the fresh fruit and vegetable program, it might be a really nice way for us to, to start that program slowly.
Sounds really interesting.
So. And we are going to be learning new breakfast regulations that actually are a little bit more confusing than the lunch regulations, so I'll be looking at that over the summer. We are, the head cooks and I have been, we have had a drop in participation this year. It's been primarily in our paid meal category, it's been about sixteen percent, that's a pretty dramatic drop. When I talk with parents, the feedback I get is the price, not necessarily the, the choice of items, and the students actually, when we had feedback, the feedback was the price versus, they liked the food, they just wanted more for the price. Unfortunately, we can't do that, but we're hopeful that now people have kind of acclimated to the price, what the meals are looking like, so that then maybe they can possibly return, and we'll be doing some more outreach with that to help educate families and, and things. And usually when I talk to parents on the phone, when I say, you know, I, I know your child would like two hamburgers, but it's one, but they could have two fruits and two vegetables, and we have this variety, it helps to, to complete the picture, at least for the parent, so. One of the things also that we're gonna be looking at, Ray and I have had some discussions, even as, towards the end of last week, a little bit further discussion about our fund balance, in response to our buildings and what our buildings may need to continue to meet new regulations in terms of food preparation, sanitation, you name it, and looking and working with our equipment folks to see, you know, is there a way that we could prepare something a little bit differently, is there some new technology out there to help us hold food at a proper temperature? There's been some changes in those regulations that we're becoming aware of, that we wanna make sure that we are in compliance with that in all of our buildings, even with the high school being as new as it is. Sanitation tends to change, and it's been changing a lot lately. I actually went to a, a full day course the other day, and, and I continued to learn more and went, ooh. For some reason, we don't get email blasts, I did ask, I said, can we get email blasts when there are changes in those regulations, and there's, for some reason, there's no mechanism for that, so we have to kind of dig for those, or when we receive our health inspections, that's when our health inspector gives us that information for us to react to. So, I'll be working with Ray and the building principals and, and the head cooks and our equipment folks to kind of identify where we may have some areas that we wanna improve, and it'll be for each building, it won't be just for one building in particular, because each building is unique and has different needs. But that, those are things that your, the fund balance are meant for, for capital improvements, and we've been doing a lot of that over the past three years. We did probably this year, probably about twelve to fifteen thousand dollars of capital improvements with freezer alarms and new ovens, and equipment that we needed to purchase for the new regulations. And we've been able, for the most part, to absorb those capital costs within our operating budget and still grow our fund balance. So, when Ray and I were talking, we said, I said, you know what, this would be a really good time for us to really look at, what do our buildings need, are we, how can we continue to improve the working space for our employees and for the product that we're producing? I think that was all of it, that's pretty much all I have to share with you tonight, but it's nice to not have to do a price increase.
Definitely. Jenny?
I have a question. I've heard that a longstanding contract is not being repeated this year, renewed this year, and the beverage department, and I'm just wondering, what are your plans, are you revamping that, or?
The co-contract is up in September. Ray and I are gonna be meeting about that probably over the summer, putting out more of a request for proposal from other, for any beverage vendor to respond to. Being as we're a USDA program, we have to do it that way, we can't just renew, and taking a look at what other providers may provide us as a service to the food service department, we'd be, we'd be doing that on behalf, at least, as I understand, we'd be doing it on behalf of the food service department, not necessarily any other department, because we have very strict purchasing rules that we have to follow because we have, we're federally funded, so. But that is, that contract is up in September, so we do need to issue something, so.
Do you have any other questions, Megan? Great, all right. Thanks for coming, nice to see you.
Nice to see you all.
All right, GEA, GESS negotiations. Where it's our last meeting, summer's coming up, not really our last meeting, but our last regular meeting, we need to be looking at getting the GEA and the GESS negotiations underway. I know past practice, sometimes the board has sent a letter to the assorted representatives, you know, offering to start negotiations over the summer, if that's something we wish to do tonight would be the night to, to go ahead and make that decision.
Do you need a motion for that?
What do we do? I at least need the tenor of the board to know what the disposition of the board is.
It would be nice to start early.
It really would.
And not add the tension of that along with the budget and everything else that involve.
Well, that brings up another part of the discussion, is that I, I am withdrawing from the GEA negotiations, and the reason for that is where we have the superintendent search going on that I'm part of, and where we are then going head on into budget, I'm not feeling hopeful that if we don't get these wrapped up before, you know, the fall comes and, and that puts up, I don't know that I will be able to do it.
Right.
So, Rhonda has been kind enough to take my place, to offer to take my place.
I thought you were on GEA.
I am on GEA.
You said GESS.
I'm sure I did not.
No, she didn't.
No, she said GEA.
Did she?
Thank you.
I hear you need battery check.
Right, so, so that's the other piece of this discussion is just to make sure that that change is, works for the board.
Did you, did you have, you fill up an IR GESS?
Yes.
Almost heard you make a motion to go ahead and send that letter out.
We should, we should be able to. Take us real long.
One would hope not.
Not the last year's experience.
I think we need to, we need to get, do it working on this, so, my recommendation, but also be to, I mean, to both.
Yeah.
We really need to bring two to the table this year.
We do.
Really need to bring two to the table.
Boy, two.
So we'll get those letters sent.
At some point, I have a, a thought about something we should probably be putting in our side with the negotiations.
Okay.
Yeah?
That would be for not public?
Yeah, totally.
I make sure we're all talking the same language, is there something that you need the superintendent to do as part of that? Yes, those letters do come through the administrative office on our behalf, and that would be the consensus of the board is for GEA, GESS letters to be sent.
I'm going to.
Do we need to do it by motion? I was looking for consensus, but I don't believe we need a motion.
I don't need to have a motion for that.
I think, I just wanna know the tenor and disposition of the board on that, and then just also let them know of person change and invite discussion for other works. Okay, so, you want the superintendent then to send the letter in on behalf? Yes, please. GEA and GESS? Yes, please. And also to identify?
Who the members are.
Who the members are with the change.
They're all gonna know who we select.
Yeah, we need to update, we need to update our committee form, just our records. Yes, please.
What do you say was taken, you believe?
Yes, Rhonda.
Oh, cool.
Right, I know.
She just has such a happy group.
All right, guys, parent requests regarding residency, administration. Okay, superintendent asks me to bring this to you, this is two parts, there is a family that moved from the Bartlett enrollment area to Manchester, this moved occurred last week, and the superintendent is recommending that the board allow the student to finish out the rest of the school year.
So moved.
Second.
So, by Suzanne, seconded by Keith, have we further discussion?
With our normal guidelines.
What's Bartlett?
With the normal.
Very much so, very much so. All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous, thank you very much. The second part of this is, this same family is requesting that the student be allowed to stay at Bartlett Elementary for the thirteen, fourteen school year. The family is not able to pay tuition, the superintendent's recommendation is based on the board's past practice, is that the board denied a request for the student to attend for the thirteen, fourteen school year.
Motion denied, second.
Okay, seconded by Suzanne.
That's a process.
Can I inquire as to why they're asking? Do we know?
I don't have that information.
Now, is this, I don't want to do this.
Our standard practices, they can do it if they pay the tuition.
Right, always remember this. I guess the question I had, and I probably had it the last time, because this came up, is, on one of them, I remember, we just didn't do anything, but since it was a request, we need to send a response, so, never mind, I'm ready to.
That was if we'd override Stacy's decision, is what, we didn't do anything.
And that way, we, we didn't have to make a motion, because.
But residency ones in our policy has to come to the board.
It should be kind of not allowed to approve.
It should be kind of not allowed to approve votes.
Do we have any further discussion of the motion on the table to deny? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay.
So I can stand for a sort of...
I have a question on the first motion.
Please.
Are we going to, does that also include that they transport the child back to school?
Yes, parental transportation.
Can I put that in as part of the motion?
Yeah.
That's our policy.
That is. Okay. Thank you. You all set with that, MC?
I am.
Okay. Thank you. Next up on the agenda is the board's termination deposit to a high percent of the home assigned to the quality address.
We did that.
LGC invoice payment.
We did that.
Address.
Uh, that's me.
It's our, we are in your dress here.
Um, no.
No, I didn't.
This is different.
Go ahead.
I believe this is different.
LGC invoice payment.
Okay. Again, from the superintendent, reminder that when an employee retires, that they can continue to purchase health insurance, and LGC acts as a broker. Collector collects and handles the insurance payments. We have a retiree who did not pay for the month of October, two thousand and twelve. The agreement with LGC is that if a month is missed, then the person is shut off from receiving benefits. A certified letter was sent to the employee requesting payment, and we have received no response. LGC did bill in November and December, and I believe in February, received a response that mail was undeliverable. The superintendent is asking for direction from the board on how to proceed. The bill is eight hundred dollars, thirty-nine cents. She recommends that the bill be paid per the agreement with LGC.
Um, hang on, I've got to think something here. Has she paid months after October?
No.
So we've received no further payment.
Correct.
The last payment was in September. Or prior to October.
Yes, the prior to October.
There was, I believe in this case, there was the death of the spouse.
Were there any requests for health payment made on that retired employee's behalf during October or after?
That's where we claim against the spouse.
That's the word, looking for claims. Because I'm not sure why it's our burden that this is a, an agreement between the employee or the retiree and LGC. We're just a final.
We actually step out of the whole process. They do everything direct under the hour, the hour's date allows them to do everything direct.
Well, my understanding is, Ray, can you help with this at all, that per the agreement that they stop, if one month payment is missed, that LGC stops, there aren't benefits. However, per the agreement that we have with LGC, we're responsible for the one month. Is that correct or incorrect?
I don't know if that makes sense.
I'd have to see that agreement. I don't believe that. I don't remember, being, that being my understanding.
Okay.
So how would you like me to proceed at this point?
We would have to look to see what the agreement actually is, if we can produce an agreement, I think we would, if we made an agreement ourselves to do that, then we would honor it. But without that, I'm not in favor of making an agreement.
Any, the disposition of the rest of the board?
No, I don't, I don't want to pay it unless they can provide an agreement.
Not without further investigation.
The agreement that we signed prior says that we agreed to cover this, and I don't see why we would have.
I don't see why we would. This is the retiree who, that puts on a hook for potentially greater, bigger than a hundred and one dollars.
Okay.
Would the motion to table on this be in order?
Do we have no motion on that?
We have no motion. We have to put it on, asked to put it on a future agenda.
Okay.
If it comes to the fact that...
And am I hearing that what you want is a better understanding of what the agreement is?
Yeah.
The basic question is, why should we pay it if the individual is paying it?
Yeah, the one month, that's what I don't understand, one month, that they're not...
Yep. We just need to, we just need to check the policy on that. Yep.
Do we need claims filed?
Yeah, if claims are filed, they're obligated.
All right. Well, you probably get into another issue with like the terms of the policy and whatnot. All right, so you'll look into that.
I will.
Teacher resignations.
Okay.
Denied.
Okay. Got your list in front of you?
In your packet.
There's your stuff.
Oh, yes, I have that.
Okay. Teacher resignations, Jennifer Stankel-Frieden, Bartlett Elementary. She was going to Boston to teach sixth grade. Do I have a motion to accept?
Should do.
By Suzanne, second by Keith. All in favor? Abstaining?
Abstaining.
Ben, I didn't see your vote. Was it a favor? I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't see your hand.
That's all right, I'm in favor.
Okay. And Keith is abstaining. So all in favor with the exception of Keith.
With McGrath.
Teacher nominations.
Nate Bracy, mathematics teacher at the high school, and Caitlin Polking, English teacher.
Nate Bracy, any relation to Sue Bracy that worked for us?
Yes.
That's her son, isn't it?
Yes, her son.
Move to elect.
These are both Gomston graduates.
Mm-hmm. I don't hate it, yeah.
So a motion to accept by Suzanne. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ben. Do I have further discussion? All in favor? We are unanimous. Thank you. Co-curriculars.
I haven't done this before. Do I read them all?
Typically, we have a piece of paper that goes around.
We have it.
Yep, you have it. It went in here.
I don't have mine. Do you have mine? Because I don't, I miss out.
Move to elect the co-curricular decisions presented to us.
Second.
No worries.
We're moving.
Keith took my paper.
I did not take your paper.
Okay. So we have a motion to accept the co-curricular nominations as presented by Suzanne, second by Jenny. Any questions?
Will we include this with the minutes? Since we didn't read the names.
Yeah, you can add it with the minutes, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. Thank you. Looks like we have some track changes.
Yeah, we don't do anything with that.
Just an FYI.
Don't we send them a note that says...
Congratulations.
We do.
The superintendent sends the letters.
We're on it. Yeah.
Would we please do that?
All right. Yep, absolutely.
And I have a student teacher.
With Sam.
Why's that going with Sam?
Thank you, Sam.
Did you know that?
Yeah, I spent the morning with him.
All right, so do I have a motion to...
Nope. Okay.
Done deal.
Thanks, guys. Any other business that may legally come before this meeting? We had no luck, so we'll entertain a motion to return. By Dan, second by Jenny. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Everybody have a great night.
Thank you.
Justin Lisa, it's been wonderful sharing the table with you.